All right, I'm gonna call the, if we're ready in the back. You ready? You ready? All right. So I'm gonna call the October 13th meeting of the La Habra Heights City Council to order. Do a quick roll call. Brian?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Norm?
Here.
And John's here. All right, let's stand for the flag salute. All right. So, you know, I get, as the mayor, I get a lot of calls complaining about stuff and it's not my favorite part of the job, but it's part of the job, so I do it. But this is the part of the job that I really enjoy, which is recognizing folks in our city that have, you know, gone above and beyond to help improve especially the safety and security of the city of La Habra Heights. So today, we're recognizing, they can come up, Mark Hughes and Dennis Swainy, for their contributions to the city helping us install a Firewatch radio here at City Hall and making it so that when we have events like, I was wondering what that was, it looked like a nuclear football. Some top-secret code we have to enter to get to it and fingerprints and retinal scan to make it work? Got it. Okay. Hey, that's my luggage. All right. So for those of you that are watching this that don't know, the city of La Habra Heights is fortunate enough to have a group called the La Habra Heights Firewatch. It meets on a fairly regular basis during the Rafferty, 2024, was it 2024 we had the mudslides? So about a year and a half, two years ago, oh, a year and a half ago, we had some pretty significant mudslides where the Firewatch radio was an important thing. We actually set up an EOC here at City Hall. We had, I think Mr. Thomas is here, Bruce Thomas is here. Bruce came in and helped us run that. During our last Fourth of July event, we set up an EOC here at City Hall with representatives from the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, Firewatch, and we had a fairly large group of citizens that volunteered on their Fourth of July to go out and patrol the city and keep it safe, working in partnership with the deputies that we had out and numerous apparatus of the Fire Department that we had out and city staff. And it, and I'll just say this, it was a pretty amazing success in that we dealt with the issues that came up within our little city fairly quickly. We kept the city safe. We didn't have any, any real issues on, on a very dry, you know, fourth with pretty significant, you know, brush growth, having been, you know, having the wet year the year before. So, Mark and Rafferty, maybe, Mark, you can talk a little bit about the radio that's being donated and the capabilities that it brings to the city.
Thank you. Well, first of all, this whole box, all the work of this fine gentleman, Dennis Swainy, and actually, I'm gonna let him tell the story because I think there's a good lesson there about perseverance.
It was really hard for me. I have what they call essential trimmers and everything that I touched, I broke. So I had to keep replacing parts, but the Lord willing and the quick didn't rise and Mark's help, I think we did a good job. Thank you.
Dennis worked on this for a little over a month and a half. This is the second radio, the second power supply and the second box. Things just never worked out, but this is not a man who, this is not a man who gives up.
You can't give up.
So.
And I'm very happy to do this and I'm very happy to say, I, my friend and I, Kelly Egan, we've been with Firewatch for 15 years and we live in this city of Whittier, but we're very happy to do everything we can for La Habra Heights.
So, thank you all.
So Dennis, here's our certificate of recognition. Mark, here's yours. Thank you so much. So this will be with staff and along with this came the installation of an antenna here at City Hall so we can make sure that we have clear communications with the repeater that the Firewatch, La Habra Heights Firewatch operates and maintains for, for the city. And, you know, I will throw out, you know, Firewatch is open to residents of La Habra Heights. If you're interested, contact Kathy Sobel. You can also contact Norm Zuniga, probably, Norm is probably the easier person to contact. His information, I think, is more publicly available. John Dominguez and Mark are also, you know, working on expanding the capabilities of Firewatch within the city. So thanks. Thank you.
And while you're getting organized again, Mayor, we did have closed session discussion and there was no reportable action out of that on the items on the agenda. That is all.
Thank you, City Attorney. Apologies for, I was just so excited about actually having something, some good news to, to report. Speaking of good news, another committed member of the city that, that takes care of us both with the Habitat Authority and with Vector Control, she always brings us great information from those two entities. Catherine, good evening.
Well, good evening, good evening, Mayor Papezka, members of the council, staff and citizens of La Habra Heights. Adam Nozeroff and I are appointed by the City Council to represent La Habra Heights on the Puente Hills Habitat Citizens Technical Advisory Committee, or C-TAC. And I want to wish Roy Francis, for all the contributions and time he spent with C-TAC, Judy and Roy have been very active with the Habitat from its inception. So you'll be Miss Roy, so. And what I'm gonna do is concentrate locally for activities that the Habitat has been doing. And first, I'm gonna list items that they've been using, the grant funds from the San Gabriel and Lower LA Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. The first is a grant that's providing for a second round of clearance in the fall. There's an increase in funds with California arborists who work in LA, or in La Habra Heights. Now, with this contractor and contracts, the work can concentrate on removal of weeds, then work on any remaining lateral deadwood, and by doing this, regular clearance will be more timely. And the second is to purchase the wildfire resiliency equipment. This includes a flail mower that's gonna be an attachment to our existing mower, two 1,000 gallon mobile water trailers to be housed at the authority's properties, and one of those properties is here in La Habra Heights, and a 2,000 gallon water tender to be used by contracted law enforcement for firefighting efforts. And this equipment can be used supplemental to our firefighting equipment and personnel. So to me, that's pretty exciting. And the third is improvements to the Habitat, the home and property in La Habra Heights. And this includes home hardening, and some funds of this is also coming from Caltrans. The Habitat plans to have before and after photos taken for educational purposes, and this could be one source of information for the questions on how to home harden. So this is great. The Habitat will create a legal description for a conservation easement associated with the Metro Heights Habitat Mitigation Restoration Project in Powder Canyon, and the survey is being paid for by the project, not the PH funds. The recent .08 acre fire that we had in Powder Canyon was contained quickly with the combined efforts of the La Habra Heights Fire Department, the Habitat Rangers, and LA County Fire. Because of their quickness in response, the fire didn't spread very far. Also, the fire occurred on restored native habitat, not flashy weeds, and that also could have helped contain the spread. The Habitat Authority is in the process of acquiring the property located at 2358 Fullerton Road using an RMC grant. 5.5 acres will be purchased. It has an area that will accommodate a small trailhead and will make a great fire break. It will also be a great as an emergency staging location for fire prevention. The property contains black walnut and has a repetarian area and will connect the wildlife corridor even better. And I know there's been deer seen in that, that particular property. The Habitat Authority restoration is also possible. The deed restriction is that the property stays as is, so it'll always be, you know, wildlife. Now, at your seats, I placed the first page of the journal article and the article in the Whittier Daily News published on August the 5th. In March, Staff Ecologist Michelle Marcel, in partnership with Whittier College, published a peer-reviewed article in the Journal of the Torrey Botanical Society demonstrating that goat grazing leads to a short-term reduction in fuel loads for fire prevention and can help reduce invasive species cover when timed appropriately. And as always, please visit online at habitatauthority.org or in the social media sites for more up-to-date information about happenings and events. And I do encourage all residents to reach out to myself or Adam if there's any questions. We can bring them to the, the Habitat, the C-TAC. And I'm also liaison to the board, so I probably will mention it there, too. That's a bonus. Any questions?
So I do think that we are looking for a replacement for Roy. So we do have an open spot on C-TAC. If there's anyone interested in that position, if they can let city staff know, if they're appointed by, you know, the council to that position.
And thanks to John Dominguez, if you go on our website, there are volunteer application forms one can fill out.
Yes, I wanted to make sure folks know that we do have an open position on C-TAC, and if you're interested in, you know, helping preserve the open space that runs through the Puente Hills, it's a, it's a really good opportunity. Thank you, Catherine.
And it is an honor to represent the city for that as well. Did you want me to talk about Vector Control? I'll be really quick.
We always love to hear about Vector Control. I mean, honestly, the mosquitoes are horrible right now. So I was, I was, I was over someone's house today and I could smell something burning and I was a little concerned and they go, oh no, they're, they're, something, we're burning some little incense in a pot for our candle.
Oh, the citronella candles?
Yeah. In a pot to try to keep the mosquitoes away because they're so bad right now.
Well, so far this year, Vector Control has seen only 140 positive samples of West Nile virus. Last year, there was 130 positive samples, so there are a few more this year. The question comes up, why does this not translate to more human cases of West Nile virus? And we've only seen four human West Nile virus cases this year in, I'm talking about LA County compared to 18 last year. And it might be because more people are using insect repellent due to the ankle-biting, irritating ascites mosquitoes. There have been 30 cases of travel-associated dengue fever, and this is small compared to 140 last year. So in a sense, when you're looking overall, it appears to be a mild mosquito season. But if you're finding that you're, you're being overloaded by mosquitoes, you know, mosquitoes don't fly very far from their water sources. So if you don't have any standing water anywhere and have lots of mosquitoes, maybe your neighbors do. And our technician from the Greater LA Vector Control will come out and look around in the areas if you're saying, hey, we're getting a lot of mosquitoes here. And it doesn't cost you anymore. I mean, you do pay a little bit on your tax bill for the Vector Control. So I mean, if they come out and check, they basically are doing that with no extra cost to you. And they'll come in, they'll actually, if there is a problem, they'll come out and take care of it. And you know, for the first time ever, the Greater LA Vector Control, they had warrants they had to take out to take care of 14 swimming pools that owners wouldn't let the Vector Control in to examine. By the way, this was in San Fernando Valley area, not here. And the pools had mosquitoes breeding. Four were, six were treated, four had a small amount of water so they could be pumped out. Two pools had mosquitoes breeding for a long time. And once the people allowed, Vector Control allowed people to come in, you know, they were able to do their work. And by the way, if there's no compliance, abatement will happen, which means you could be fined because, you know, Vector Control is part of the Health Department. But if you do, if you have a suspect, suspect pool in your area, or if you're concerned about even some area around your place, feel free to call them. And if you want more information, you can go to glamosquito.org or just call the Greater Los Angeles Vector Control Board, you know, or Control District, I should say.
Kathy, I know several people that have horses, and in the past, they've brought out the mosquito, the little larvae fish to put in the troughs.
You can get those.
Do they still do that?
Yes, they do. They're mosquito fish, they're called.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the time. I do appreciate you letting me come up since I'm representing the city, which to me is an honor. I'm glad that I can come up and at least keep you up to date of what I'm hearing that pertains to our community. Because to me, it's important. It's all about our health in many ways.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks.
And it's not just us, it's the, you know, hopefully, there are more than a few people watching the council meetings on video and hopefully, that message is getting out to them also. So thank you for your, your work.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Absolutely.
Just because it came up, so I'm, this is from my vast experience. Goats are horrible creatures. I hate goats. We always, everybody thinks they're these furry little friendly things that eat everything. They are horrible evil creatures and they're very finicky eaters and they will not solve your problems. They just create problems. So I just wanted to get that off my chest because I hate goats. That's all.
I know what I'm getting you for Christmas.
Oh, they're, they're delicious. Don't get me wrong. They're delicious. But, okay.
Wow.
I'm only being.
Sounds like someone's childhood had a.
I did get attacked by a goat when I lived in New Zealand, but that's not why I'm talking right now. And I don't want to talk about that, frankly. So, okay.
So why do the goats, are, is it not good to have them do the fire abatement? They cause problems?
So everybody thinks they're gonna eat issue, eat certain things. They only eat certain grasses and they, they will like leave all the stuff that burns a lot and they won't eat it. They don't go where they, you want them to go. They're quite lazy, right? Now, the sheepdogs are cool. I've seen a sheepdog kill a mountain lion, so if you're into that, that's cool. But the goats, the goats aren't helpful.
Okay. How did we get here?
Well, no, she said goats. And I, I want her to have my vast experience in goat husbandry, which sounds weird, about that. So, there you go.
All right, well.
I'm done. Unless you want more, I'm done.
I'm gonna bang the banger in a minute to get this.
Okay, that's, feel free to agendize.
I like to have equal time from, I like to give the goats equal time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to public comment. I've got one card. The council did receive some emails from several members of the public that I think all of you saw and I think we can use to inform tonight's meeting if we have to. I know I will, I'll pull them up if I need to. So for those of you that do send council email, I do, I do look at all the emails before the council meeting. So if you're not here, I think our emails are all public. If you want to send comments in to help inform our decision-making, at least I welcome the emails, so always feel free to do that. I've only got one card tonight from Kathy Sobel. She'd like to, to talk about Firewatch, I believe. So since it was one of the presentations, we can say it's on the agenda.
Good evening. Thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I thought since my little friends were recognized, I would. I wanted to thank Dennis and Mark and like, what?
Maybe for everyone that doesn't know you out in TV land and.
Oh.
Maybe just who you are and.
Okay. I thought you already said. Okay, I'm Kathy Sobel. I'm PIO for Firewatch. And I just wanted to thank Dennis and Mark for their contribution in putting things together so when there's an event for an emergency, it would allow Firewatch to have a place already set up and be able to do communications to help with our community. And also, John Dominguez, you know, he's working on evacuation maps with EPC and I, that will be something that'll be very valuable. We've had different maps in the past and stuff, but things have needed to be updated. I would encourage people when they have a slow day, like a Sunday or whatever, like 100 years ago, I used to tell you, to, you know, take a drive through the city because a lot of people only go in and out a couple of places, but you would be surprised how many roads you could actually evacuate out of if you do it early enough. You never want to wait until the powers that be tell you to evacuate because then everyone will be on the road and you'll have gridlock, which will make it very difficult to get out. And I would just encourage people to, you know, look for opportunities to volunteer. I think a lot of times, it's better if you do a face-to-face and ask somebody because sometimes people, it is nice that we have the forums online so people can sign up, but I think if you do a personal contact, it also is beneficial. I know Norm, 100 years ago, I asked him to join EPC and we were on there for a super-long time and so that personal contact makes a big difference. And as the mayor said, anyone is able to apply and join Firewatch. We have people in La Habra, Whittier, here because if there's an event, it's not going to just impact our community, it will impact other communities. And so it is important and having communication also. So, thank you.
Oh, it's a, it's a critical aspect of the Heights because in the, the Heights is unique from a lot of the flatland areas in that the minute the power goes off up here, most people lose their, their only form of communication, which is cellular these days where, you know, as, as the phone companies move away from landlines and are more reliant on things like fiber and, and even cable, for those of you that, that use cable for your phone service, those things are dependent on power and generally will have issues after a little bit of time. So Firewatch is a key safety attribute to the city. So Kathy, Mark, Dennis, thank you so much. All right. Any other public comments? I only had the one card. You gonna talk about the 18th?
John Dominguez from Firewatch. I just wanted to clarify or expand on what Kathy said about the stuff I'm working on, which is the, the evacuation map. I am gonna be asking anybody and everybody that I can talk to to help me out with it, to review it, to make sure it's valid. I'm gonna make sure I'm gonna be driving the streets that I'm putting down as far as evacuation routes. I'm gonna be taking a little app with me that's gonna, that has all the evacuation routes plotted out and it's gonna have a point for me to, on a screen to follow, to go through all those routes to actually make sure they actually work. But I actually need other people to give me their input so we can have something that was produced by everybody, that everybody's familiar with and understands and can give me feedback as to what needs to be clarified. For example, I'm making multiple versions of the same thing for anybody to download, whatever works for you. If you're colorblind, then we have a colorblind version for you. If you want it in bigger sized paper, we have that. So all of that, I'm just looking for feedback. I will be sending emails to everybody I know in, in La Habra Heights to get feedback in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? None. Okay. Any, I think we heard from the committees, so I think we're good on the committee. So on city council comments, I've got a couple. So just announcements, so John, John Dominguez chairs our trash pickup. So for those of you that are interested in beautifying at least the Hacienda section of La Habra, La Habra Heights, this Saturday, John, we meet at 7?
6:45.
6:45 here at City Hall. Just, just come as you are. We provide all the equipment and the trash bags and the safety vests. City staff helps, keeps us safe. Hacienda is a disaster right now. I, I, I am always shocked about the amount of trash that ends up on Hacienda, but driving it today, I mean, there are, someone must have drove through the city with a van full of loose furniture because there's couch cushions and chairs and all kinds of stuff along Hacienda today. So that's one thing. Second thing is the, the Halloween haunt. So the 31st, I know, you know, La Habra Heights is a challenge for people with kids to do trick-or-treating, but our, the La Habra Heights Improvement Association does put on a pretty amazing show at the gym on the 31st. So if you have kids that are the age, please bring them. And if you just want to come watch kids have a really fun time, it's, it's an enjoyable thing. You know, please support the Improvement Association. If you're not a member, please, you know, please consider joining. And then the last thing is the 18th also, you know, the, is the quarterly cleanup day. So we will have our friends from Ware here accepting everything and anything, and I think we'll have electronic waste also from the county, right?
Correct. E-waste as well.
Yep. So, any other council comments?
I just wanted to back, I don't know how many people watch the council meetings and I know a lot of people don't even pay attention to the city much, but we heard from Kathy how you can get these free little fish to clean up the mosquitoes. And then also, the Red Cross has recently got a program, I don't know, I assume it's on the website, where anybody can call in and the Red Cross will come and put in a battery-powered fire alarm or fire alarms in your house for free. And they said it was a lithium battery last 10 years. So there are advantages if you pay attention to what's going on in the city. That's all.
Thanks, Carol. Anyone else?
If I could, yes.
Of course, Norm.
I, I'm sure you've all received comments over the, over the last several months also, but there are people who've had problems with the service from Ware, or at least they perceive it to be problems. And the, ordinarily, that, that would be something between them and the, and Ware, the, the trash company, except in our, in this case, we chose them as the, as the contractor for, to work at the, work in the city. We also require every resident to essentially contract with them. So in that sense, the city bears some responsibility for problems, the, or at least helping the citizens to resolve their problems with Ware. And it's been about a year or so since we started with them. It, of course, takes several months to kind of get, for them to get into the swing of things. And although I personally have, have no problem with my service with them, their service to me has been quite good as far as I'm concerned, I think we've reached the time that we ought to start, you know, basically encouraging people to send emails to the city if any problem, about the problems we're having. And perhaps the committee that, the ad hoc committee that chose Ware to begin with can look at the problems and find ways to resolve some of them. Because the, some of these problems are, are, have been going on for quite a while and some of our residents are quite upset and they, it's hard for individual residents to go against a, a company. So I think we bear some responsibility. I think we ought to help resolve some of these problems between Ware and our residents. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm. All right. Go ahead and move on to our reports. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I also wanted to thank Dennis and Mark and Firewatch for, they saw a problem, worked together and found a solution to it. And it was great to kind of see that and be able to meet and work a little closer with them as they went through this process for it. And it was something I was thinking in the back of my head as well. We had that great inter-agency operation we did on Fourth of July with the city and Firewatch and the Sheriff's Department and the Rangers from Habitat. It was really good to work together and was kind of saw like how they pulled together the EOC and it was kind of thinking it might be nice to have an antenna, would make it a little easier for Firewatch to be able to operate in an emergency here and help and assist as, as they do. And Mark and Dennis had already had, had a plan for that and were working through it. So I also wanted to just send a thank you to them and to Firewatch. They're, they're a great organization and a real benefit to the community. So, that's all.
Thank you. All right, City Attorney?
No report.
Okay. Community Development?
The month of September, we issued 14 bills.
The month of September, we issued 14 building permits. We took in one code enforcement case. We closed three cases. We issued two stop work orders, closed six unpermitted construction cases, took in seven development applications, and approved 10 projects. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Questions? Fire chief?
Yes, good, good evening. So, looking over the incidents, pretty much the same that we've had. We had 56 calls for service, a couple upticks, fire calls went up a little bit. That's not so much an area of concern for us because as you can see, we've been able to handle the things that we've had in the city pretty, pretty good. I'm very proud of our fire department. Our young members do an outstanding job without some of the resources that, that the other departments might have. We, some of the highlights, I just attended a, a Fire Chiefs conference and was pretty, wanted to walk around and tap myself on the show, on the back, but I didn't. Seems like the other departments are having a problem with recruitment and retention. And I didn't have the heart to tell them that I've got 30 firefighters waiting in the wings to come work for us. I can't afford to buy them turnout equipment. And I certainly did, would like to release them to the departments, but it was a good feeling to know that we're, we're doing very good with recruiting and, and keeping our, our, our people here. Little bit of update on the Pierce Engine. Today, I got confirmed of these flash codes that were delivered to ISD, which is the radio people that are going to be installing them into our new rigs. So I anticipate anytime this week, we should be getting our Pierce Engine back and ready to be put into service at the end of this week if we get it back. Brush clearance continues on the path that it has been very successfully. 623 inspections. We did 220 parcel inspections were performed and to my knowledge, not having any problem with compliance at the time. Vegetation management, fire locks are all being handled. And we're discussing the roadside clearance. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for the chief? Sheriff's Department?
Hello, I'm Deputy Siakka, just filling in for Deputy Beltran today. For the month of September, there was one assault with a deadly weapon case, two traffic accidents, one trespassing, and then one hit-and-run collision. Sorry. And that was all that was relayed to me from Deputy Beltran.
Any questions for our deputy? Thank you for being here tonight. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone need anything pulled? Rap?
Item number nine on consent is wave reading in full of ordinances, resolutions, meeting minutes on the agenda. Item number 10 is approval of warrants report for September 2025. Number 11 is treasurer's report for the month of July 2025. Item number 12 is treasurer's report for the month of August 2025. Number 13 is minutes from September 6th special city council meeting. Item number 14 is minutes of the September 8th 2025 regular city council meeting. Number 15 is minutes of the October 4th special city council meeting. And number 16 is project updates and deadlines.
Move approval?
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John's yes. All right. Let's move into the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is protest hearings for unpaid brush clearance costs. This item comes to you as part of our brush clearance program as they go out and do work on the properties. There are some properties which we have to go through abatement. There is one item on there tonight. That item happens to be within conflict location for Councilmember Steffler. So before we get into the item, I may ask him to recuse himself since it is within 500 feet of his property. So, the item tonight is that, is unpaid brush clearance costs and liens. So as part of it, we go through the process to notice property owners for the abatement of property, clearance of weeds, dead brush and debris. Through that process, those that do not go through the process or completed, go through an abatement process. With that, with the city, with the fire marshal, we go out and go through a process. We obtain a warrant to do the work on the property, do out, go out, bid the project, complete the work, and then provide an opportunity to the owner to pay the, the cost for the brush clearance before we place liens on the property for it. So before you tonight, there is one, one property on there. It's located at 672 Greenview Road, is one that has been here for brush clearance liens and abatement. So the recommendation tonight is for the city council to overrule any protests, if any have offered during the protest hearings and adopt Resolution 2025-2028 confirming the report of costs incurred by the city and authorizing the assessment as liens to be placed on the tax rules effective of October 13th, 2025. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I think one of the common questions, Rafferty, that we have, is this a frequent flyer? Has this property been abated before?
Frequent flyer, abated pretty much every year.
Okay.
One other question is the amount here of abatement, is that is for this year or is that an accumulated amount?
That is for this year.
Okay. What's the total lien we have against them so far?
I don't know the total, the total lien off the top of my head.
Presumably quite substantial.
Add or near maybe 100,000 in total.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any public comment on this item? None? Okay. Motion?
Now, that was my question, if there's open public meeting, and you did, so it's open and closed. So I, my motion is to go ahead and move forward on the, on the assessment.
Okay. Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John's a yes. All right. So I'll close, close this. All right. Second item on the public hearing is adaptation of the 2025 California Building Standards Code.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This item before you tonight is building code cycle time. Done in a three-year cycle. So it is time for us to update our building and fire codes based off of the revisions that are done at a state level. We have our building official, Scott Fizikis, here tonight. He'll talk a little bit about the building codes and any changes or amendments we make to them. So I'll hand it over to Scott.
Thank you for having me, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. This will be a short presentation because there aren't a whole lot of changes that are going to occur with all the hundreds of code changes that go into the state code. There are just a few that affect a residential community like ours. This is the perfect timing for it. The first and second reading, the second reading, if, if this moves forward, would be in November, which would get us before December 1st. The California Building Standards Amendments that we pass will go into effect 30 days or later after we have our second reading, and that would make this effective January 1, 2026. We're basically re-adopting the same provisions that we currently have in the code for things like pool safety barriers, and those are state statute. They're not even a building code item, they're just placed in the building code for reference. And we have a consolidation of some of the provisions we've seen in the past that are familiar to La Habra Heights. We have the residential requirements in Section R 337, which is the fireproofing of buildings, the exterior fire exposure prevention. And those are for new structures that are built, new complete residential buildings. And there are also provisions in the commercial regulations that would affect clubhouses and community centers in Chapter 7A of the building, building, building code, not the residential. And then the Chapter 49 from the Fire Code, which has been a recent, much, much attention paid to it, provision on fuel modifications for areas near brush. So they've put everything from those two separate code things on making sure that the buildings are fireproof from the outside, along with the fuel modifications into a new WUI code, Wildland Urban Interface, and that's now Part 7 of the building code. It was an empty section, not used. So those are the, that's really the big things, major macro perspective. And the new thing that may affect residential buildings that you may hear about, there's now allowance for sleeping lofts. So if you've got an interior attic area that's being converted into habitable, it allows for a little bit lower sleeping clearances in a, in a bed loft. And we have some new requirements for building integrated photovoltaic systems. And that's because we're starting to see more interest in outside cladding of buildings that would have solar collection features to them, including shingles now. They've, they've been around for a while, but the cost has been high of shingles that are actually solar panels as well. And that's going to be a new thing. And the last thing I'll mention is the BES, the battery energy storage systems. And those are getting, seeing quite a few changes. There were some mid-cycle changes that were done in July of '24 that are in this first code, this code for the first full-year cycle. But there have been some fire hazards with runaway fires, and so the locations are becoming important to keep them outside of buildings unless sprinklers are provided. And keeping them away from openable windows, underfloor vents, attic vents, anything that if the fire gets carried away, it would intend to ignite the building. So we'll be watching a little more closely on new permits for battery installations is, is a new concern. And that's the end of my report. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I guess I have one question. I, I think I know the answer to it, but I guess you can reaffirm it, that all of these things before us tonight, it's all rolled down from the state, so there's, there's nothing we could do on this anyway. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the only other question I had is on the Wildland Interface. I know we designate our whole entire city as a high-fire hazard area, and we could change that based on the fire maps. But the only thing, the, the downside, I guess, of that would be the, those homes that were out of the wildfire area, I guess, wouldn't require the hardening that the other homes would have. Is that true?
Well, they, they wouldn't be in the state-required, local or state-mapped area that would automatically require that. Whether the city decides to do some hardening of other buildings, regardless of whether they're in the mapped area, would be a separate issue, I think.
I mean, I feel pretty strongly that the homes built in La Habra Heights need to be hardened anyway, so that's, so I'm totally on board with that the way it is, so.
Yeah, before we...
Those are my questions.
Brian, that's a great question. I, I know that we had a, one of our residents bring that up about why we're not bifurcating the city based on the map. And Chief Martin, maybe at some point in time, you can prepare a, a meeting on urban conflagration and, and the concerns that are there where, you know, cities like Lindora, while, while they're in the foothills, they look a lot like us. You look at the UC issues with, with cities, it, it doesn't anymore, it, it, if you're near this, even, you know, the, the fact that we're a little bit of a hybrid now because of the new city map, I'd get worried. I, I'd want to have more information before we talked about bifurcating the city. I, I think that's the safest thing to do for now. Okay. Any other questions from council? I'll open the public hearing. Any public comments? Hearing none, I will close it. Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to the, for the adoption of 2025 California Building Standards Codes.
This one would be the introduction of the ordinance 2025-04, an ordinance of the city council of the city of La Habra Heights, California, adopting the 2025 additions of the California Building Standards Code and making necessary amendments thereto, and setting the date of November 10th, 2025, our next city council meeting for the public hearing.
So that's the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Thank you. Carol?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And John's yes. All right. Moving on, item 19.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one sort of follows up the building fire code, is the fire code portion of it. So this is for the adoption of the 2025 Fire Code. And as we heard our building official, Mr. Fizikis, talk about, the largest sort of thing that happens in there is, is the WUI. You'll start hearing that term a lot more, WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface, which is sort of where the cities meet up to all these wildland areas, which we are a prime example of. Before was in a couple of different areas. It is now, as our building official said, in Chapter 7 of the building code, in there. So that was probably the, the largest change that happens to our building code, our fire code ordinances. But the, before you tonight is ordinance 2025-05, which would be the adoptions of the 2025 addition of the California Fire Code, making necessary amendments too. Similar to the building code, they go on a three-year cycle, they're updated based off of state, state codes, and lots and lots of meetings they have at the state level there. If you have any questions, myself or Mr. Fizikis would probably be happy to answer.
All right. I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public comment on the fire code?
Sorry, I'm waiting for public comments.
I just opened them.
I'd like to address the council.
Step up.
Thank you. My name is Mark Weddell. I own a property on 570 Churchill Road. I'm having difficulty getting a permit to replace a deteriorating retaining wall that encircles my elevated property.
Okay, um, sorry.
It's okay.
Did you have a comment on this?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries.
I'll come back.
Yeah, just, yeah, sorry. Misunderstood. Yeah, we opened up the public hearing on this one issue. And then towards, I'll try to get through the agenda fairly quickly and then towards the end.
I wasn't aware of the protocol.
Yeah, no worries. Toward the end, we do open it up for public comment on items not on the agenda. We'll get you, sorry you have to wait, but just give me a couple of minutes. All right. So I'll close hearing, no public comment on this item, any, I'll close the public hearing.
I guess I have the same question on this. This is adoption of, it's everything from the state rolling down to our level and updating our current ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
So then I'll make a motion for ordinance 2025-05, an ordinance of the city council of the city of La Habra Heights, California, adopting 2025 addition of the California Fire Code and making necessary amendments here too, and it'll be the first reading.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
John's yes.
And Mayor, Todd here.
Yes, sir.
And just to Brian's point, the, yes, we have to adopt the state, various building codes and fire codes. We're allowed to make local amendments based upon topographic, geologic, and climatic conditions, which these do, and we make certain findings to make them more La Habra Heights specific. So I didn't want you to think they're just what the state said. They're actually more protective. And Raf and I were just talking, if you want me to explain the fire map issue, yeah, the state came out with the fire maps and only part of us, part of us, the city is within the very high fire area, but the city through the building code pretty much imposes all those requirements on every home in the city for the hardening purposes. So that's how it all plays out.
And I think we should have, I mean, I think we should have a discussion maybe with, on another council meeting sometime to discuss that whole issue with the, the maps and things.
I, I, I agree. I just want to make sure that, you know, I think we've got some people with opinions, but those opinions should be informed by our fire professionals. And, you know, like I said, there's some new fire science around what happened in both Palisades and Altadena. And I think we owe it to the residents to make sure everyone understands the reason why we might not want to look at degrading the fire codes for an area that is directly, you know, just because a map changed a boundary doesn't mean the fire behavior is going to change significantly. So I, I'm sorry, I'm voicing my opinion here, but I think we should, you know, ask the chief sometime here in the next month or two to bring forth and a, a presentation on, you know, what happened in Altadena, why we might not want to erode our, our fire codes, and we should listen to the professionals.
And a discussion all about the home hardening and everything else. I think we should have a separate item for that and have some discussion about it.
Yep.
You know, and Mayor, to that point, and just so people are clear, I mean, the home hardening, that's one thing, right? That's not necessarily correlative to the CalFire fire maps, which are put together pursuant to some algorithm that CalFire says, well, look at our website, it's all on there, but nobody can really figure it out because it's a bit mysterious. I am not aware of any other city in the state changing their CalFire map designation, which the city has the ability to do. There's insurance concerns and a bunch of other stuff. I mean, the real issue is, are you going to have the codes in place that harden the homes, which you can do through the building codes? So there, for what it's worth.
But we are seeing, I mean, I, I think the council does hear from some of the residents about, hey, look, I'm concerned that the map changed, why am I being held to a higher standard on the map change? So I just want to make sure that we address that.
Yeah, and we've tried, in other jurisdictions, I've tried to get people, and maybe the chief would want to, from CalFire to come explain that to us, they won't come.
Yeah.
It's just so.
I agree. Yes, chief.
So yes, there is some, I'm going to be discussing with the city manager about maybe putting on another workshop, because we do have ordinances that are coming, that are state mandated, but as the, our attorney has stated, you know, it's all relative to insurance. The, the broader picture is, can the people get insurance? That's what they're concerned about. And can the people really home harden their house enough to meet the state standard that's coming in twenty twenty-nine? That's a whole other issue. So I'm putting together a PowerPoint where we can relatively eliminate any kind of misunderstanding and misinterpretation of the laws that are coming and the ordinances, especially as it applies to zone zero. And on a follow-up with the city attorney, I do have contact with CalFire, and both of them have said that they could be anywhere that we asked them to be and, and discuss any issues that we have.
Once we get through this series on the, the financial issues, maybe we can target spring. That would be a good time to have that discussion, because it'll be going into summer and our wee debatement, our primary wee debatement period. So that might be a good, good workshop to have somewhere in the springtime. Okay. All right. I am going to make an audible here. We've got about half a dozen administrative items, and I know we have a member of the public here that would like to comment. So I'm going to move item.
Do you just want to reopen? Public comment?
I'm going to, well, I'm going to bring item twenty-eight up. So if there's any member of the public here that would like to make a comment about items not on the agenda, Mark, this is your, your time now. Step on up and, yep.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Mark Weddell, and I'm trying to replace a deteriorating retaining wall that encircles my elevated property on five seventy Churchill Road. I submitted a application for a permit on September the second, and I was informed that I would need a variance. And I've been waiting patiently to hear from that individual. After five weeks, I gave up and sent the city manager three emails, and I have received no response whatsoever. I'm just looking for guidance or a recommendation. If I'm dealing with someone who does not respond to my needs, should I go directly to the building department?
So the city manager's here, so I'll give him, usually we don't comment, but since.
Oh, that'd be great.
But I'll give the city manager an opportunity.
We have an application that somebody wanted to submit for a retaining wall, which we don't have a mechanism to be able to approve due to location heights and code requirements of it. City engineer is looking at options and things that would have the potential for it. There may be an opportunity to be able to go through a variance process for it. We still need to figure out all the details of how we can do it, or it may end up requiring the property owner to widen the road to be able to meet the standards of the requirement. So working through those factors of it, sorry, I haven't been able to, to return your, your emails to you. I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
That would be great. I appreciate it. The reason I bring this up is because the window before the rainy season comes is shrinking, and the rain runoff will only further erode my property. That's why it's critical to me. Thank you very much.
Mark, thank you.
All right. Have a nice evening.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Sure.
I drive down your corner. I live up above you. I drive down your corner every single day. Thank you for trying to do this. This is an important thing to do, and it's a wonderful thing you're going to do. It's just going to be a little hard to do because of how narrow Churchill is there and how close your home is to the edge. But I, I certainly support you doing it, and I'm sure Rafferty will find the proper way to help you get it done. Thanks for doing it.
If there's anything I can do, I'll be happy to do it. I got this car, I'll do that too.
It sounds a little more complicated than just a regular retaining wall. Sir Rafferty, thank you for reaching out to the city engineer and doing everything to keep this moving.
Okay, I'll go to the city manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. All right, let's move, let's go back to where we were. I think we were at item twenty, correct?
Correct, item twenty. So the item before you tonight is the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-five, zones five and three, street improvement project award of contracts. So this covers street improvement projects in two different zones and two areas. The staff and city engineer work closely with the roads advisory committee to put together a pair of design plans. We finalize those, put the project out to bid. Through that bid process, contractors are required to come in and pick up bid packets. So we had seven companies who came in and purchased bid packets on our plan holders list. And we opened the, we opened the sealed bids on September tenth. We received a total of six bids from contractors for the project. Those bid amounts ranged from one point five seven five million dollars to just over two point two million dollars for those. Some of them are very, very, very close in costs for those ones, in the, in the middle pack there. From those ones, we did, the low bidder for the project was Hardy and Harper, Inc., with a bid of one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be able to complete the work on zones three and five as part of the project. So it'll be work that will be done on Dorothea Road, Tooman Road, Fullerton Road, East Road, Skyline Drive, Canola Road, Avocado Crest Road, Pepper Tree Drive, Encinas Drive, and Old Eander Road as part of this particular project. So staff's recommendation is to award the fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-five, zones three and five, street improvement project for the construction contract to Hardy and Harper in the amount of one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand, and authorize a budget amendment to increase, the budget amendment increasing the amount of three hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred dollars to account one oh one, four fifty, PWD sixty-eight thirty for the construction. Authorize a contingency for this project in the amount of fifteen percent or two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars. Authorize a budget amendment to increase the amount of fifty-one thousand five oh nine to account one oh one, four fifty, PWD sixty-eight thirty for the contingency, and authorize the city manager to execute contracts in the form, form approved by city attorney. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I don't understand item D. So you're, you're, so we're, we're kicking it up to match the bid, the three forty-three, and we're authorizing a contingency of fifteen percent of two thirty-six. What's the next amount for contingency? Why wouldn't, why do we have two contingency amounts?
It's the difference from what was budgeted. So in order for me to increase the budget, I need to have this verbiage. So we, our, but our budget was based on an estimate because this hadn't happened yet. So now that we have a hard number, we're able to increase the budget so it matches. Otherwise, the construction would be a negative three hundred and forty-three thousand. Because when we budgeted this project, it was based on an estimate only, not, not the hard numbers. So this is just allowing us to have the correct numbers budgeted.
But isn't the normal process, so you're adding money to the budget to come to the bid, then you're adding a fifteen percent contingency. I get that. What I don't get is what's the other little fifty thousand bucks for? I don't understand that.
So it's, so what this is saying is the contingency to increase, to add the contingency of fifteen thousand or two, there's, there's already a contingency budgeted, but it wasn't two hundred and thirty-six thousand. It was less than that.
Well, I'm totally confused, Ange, I'm sorry.
It's, it's the difference between, so when we go through the budget process, we budget out the construction costs, and she also line item budgets the contingency aspect of it. So item B is, which you were talking about, it's, it's the difference between the budgeted construction amount and the actual construction amount. And item D is the difference in the line item in the budget between the budgeted contingency amount and the amount of actual contingency based off the construction.
Okay, I get it.
It, it's in the fiscal impact. I didn't realize I did break it down. I'm trying to remember what the numbers are. So originally, the contingency was budgeted, at the time, the fifteen percent was a hundred eighty-four thousand. But now with the construction amount, the new fifteen percent is two hundred and thirty-six. So we're just budgeting the difference.
Yeah. I love budgeting.
Good, Greg? Good?
I'm good.
All right. Brian?
The question, have, have we had a conversation with Hardy and Harper as far as if they get this bid awarded tonight, when they're going to start and when they're going to complete?
Not yet, not until we award it, then we can, we'll start that conversation with them.
I guess my concern is we're moving into the winter time.
This does not include the, what do you call it, the oversight or the inspection or the?
Construction management and inspection.
Yeah.
That's being bid separately right now.
And are we taking competing bids, or are we just giving it to our, what is their?
NV five.
NV five again.
We have put it out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
Norm, you good?
Nothing to add at this point, no.
Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the project items A, B, C, D, and E as articulated by Mr. Rafferty.
Second.
Norm? Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John's yes. Item twenty-one.
This item before you tonight is for the pavement management plan or PMP. So award of contract to Bucknham Infrastructure Group. Same as we do with the street improvement projects, we go through a process where we calculate the, the PCI score, so the average condition of the pavement out there, and we do that through a pavement management plan. It is something that is required by Metro as part of our funding sources for street improvement projects. We have to do it on a rotating annual basis, so typically every three years. So we're back at that time where it's necessary for us to update our PMP, and also as it gives us a roadmap to our next street improvement project. So as part of that, they go out, they look at the work that has been done, they send engineers out to the field to survey the streets and look at the condition of the pavement that is out there, assign a PCI to it, and they also gave us, give us recommendations for projects and treatments and ways to, to make those street improvements for future projects in the future. So it is, we're right at that point where we need to do that to be able to move into the design for the next one. And also, this gives us the ability to see where our street projects have gotten us over the years. We've kind of gone from being in the low sixties all the way up to seventy at our last one. So this one hopefully should be another good one to come up and see where we are, our pavement condition is today. We did put it out to bid. We did receive two bids from two companies, Bucknham Infrastructure Group and GMU were the two that submitted proposals. Of those two, they are both qualified companies. Bucknham Infrastructure Group was slightly less than GMU. So our recommendation is for the city council to authorize a ward of professional services agreement to Bucknham Infrastructure Group in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute agreements in the form approved by city man, city attorney, and authorize a budget amendment of, in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars to account one oh one, four fifty, PWD sixty-six fifty. Their proposal is attached to the staff report, so you can see for that one. And a, a timeline for general process for this one would be kickoff in, in mid-October into late November for a delivery of draft of the PMP, so we can then take that to our roads committee and have some conversations, and hopefully a final report in early twenty twenty-six. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
I have one question. Do you have, do you know approximately when the last one was accomplished? And I, I believe it was done by the same firm. Is that correct?
The last few we've done have been done by the same firm. We began the review in twenty twenty-two and finalized in early twenty-three.
And how often, you said we have to have this for a certain funding?
Metro requires us to have an approved PMP pavement management plan done every three years. I want us to get updated every three years. So we're, we're right at that window for.
Every three years, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the other bid?
The other bid was twenty-nine thousand.
The others? All right.
Move to accept the recommendation of the, item twenty-one.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And John's yes. Twenty-two. Chief going to do this, or?
The guy died in the storm.
Okay, well, this, this required a little bit of maneuvering, let's say, to say the least. But we successfully were able to get a medical director and have him in place effective October the first. So we're in total compliance with EMS, and they, I just got a letter today approving his status as our medical director.
So in the past, for fire department to be able to operate and provide medications to patients, so basically for the paramedics to be able to do their work, we have to have a medical director that oversees the dispensing of controlled substances and narcotics and drugs. We have been, our previous medical director, Dr. Gess, has retired. So we've been in the process of recruiting for a new medical director to take over for Dr. Gess. So it's, they don't, there're not a lot of them out there. It's a little more difficult to do and get there. There is a lot of requirements that you do have to be able to meet. This is so. that you do have to be able to meet. Um, this is something that has to be reviewed and approved by, um, the EMS agency with L.A. County as part of it. Um, so we have been working with our, um, nurse educator that helps us with our paramedic program, get us, um, some people to be able to talk to. Even Dr. Guess is your, he's retiring. He provided a couple of names for us to talk to. So Chief Jorgensen and Chief Martin have been working quite hard to try to, to get to this point of getting a new medical director on board. Um, so we have done that one. Um, so obviously in the past, uh, Dr. Guess was a little bit less expensive, as everything is nowadays. It's a little more expensive. Um, so previously, um, I think medical director was around six thousand dollars a year. The new, um, contract with our, our new medical directors, uh, is ten thousand dollars a year. So slight increase in the cost for medical directors. Um, they provide a, a few things for the department. A, they, it's their license that is, um, utilized by the doctor and our nurse educator and our chief Jorgensen to be able to order and have all of the medications that we need to be able to provide all of those A L S services out there, um, when we're firefighters or out in the public and, and helping our residents and surrounding people for it. Um, they also provide some oversight with us as long as we, every year, we have an annual, um, an annual audit by the EMS agency. They're involved in that audit. They provide some additional training for our paramedics and staffing for the fire department related to the dispensing of narcotics and when and how to use those things. So they do a little additional outreach and education to it. Um, so that's, our recommendation there is for, um, the city council to authorize, uh, city manager to enter, enter into an agreement approved by the city attorney with EMS physician solutions for medical director services.
Questions?
So we actually interviewed this person?
We did. We, we met with him a couple of times. Chief Jorgensen met with him a few times to, to kind of go through and look at the unique characteristics of, of the heights and how we operate to be able to make sure they would work for how we operate.
If I was reading Chief Martin correctly, there probably wasn't a whole lot of applicants out there for this, son.
There's not a lot of people.
Well, so to explain it a little bit further, so you had EMS solutions. These were medical directors of major cities, L.A. County. You had, uh, the medical director of L.A. City. Then you had Orange County Fire Authority. So all, they have a, not a conglomerate, but they have a co-op group that they work together and they bring like an umbrella type of insurance, uh, program to whoever they're covering. But they're pretty expensive, you can imagine. They do offer, uh, a lot of EMS updating and, um, in-house training for, say, some kind of traumatic injury that's not normally covered, uh, on a day-to-day basis with, uh, with the, uh, regular type of calls that we go on. So they would come out and provide extended training. Say somebody had, uh, an external, um, outcome on a cardiac device that was installed on them. That's not something that you run into every day. There's new, um, devices out there every day and maybe one in a, a million might have it. There's no one in La Habra Heights that has that kind of a device. But they would come out and provide instruction for that. So they were a little bit expensive for us and so we decided to go. We asked them and the, the one, a medical, uh, director was able to work with us even though he, it was a little bit more. But, you know, we did get a good service and yes, he does, uh, come recommended and he's on that board with them.
Any other questions?
So I'll make a motion to move approval.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Johnson, yes. All right, uh, twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is, that is the wrap-up from our fire department strategic planning workshop. Um, not last Saturday, but earlier, a little bit earlier this month, we held a Saturday workshop meeting related to fire department, the costs to operate the fire department. We had, uh, quite a bit of attendance from, from residents and a lot of good discussion and, um, questions that came out of it. Um, so it was a very good and I think very, um, useful workshop for us. Um, this is just some, some of the recap of some of the important points and things that we touched on during that workshop. Um, it was very well attended and we're very happy to have the engagement from the, the community in the way we can have a little more, um, back and forth and question and answer than at a workshop meeting that we can at the council meeting. So it was a great session. We'll continue on in November and have one related to sheriff's department costs.
I think because of the, I also want to congratulate you for, and Josh, for doing that excellent report about the session. Uh, it really was informative. We jumped around a lot during that presentation. Chief Martin did a great job of presenting the issues that his department faces at the moment, but I really think that explanation was a extremely well-done one. And I, hopefully people read it and understand it because it was very clear that we have real issues we have to resolve.
And one of the issues, Rafferty, that came out of that, that I hope we do look at, we just approved a million and a half dollars on road, some roadwork, is the grubbing issue that Matt Edger brought up. So I, I don't know how we can operationalize that, but if we're spending the type of money, if we're truly spending the type of money that Matt brought up, um, that, that seems like an opportunity for us to push some of those costs onto the properties that are causing that problem. So I don't know if there's a way to do that as part of this upcoming bid, but I sure would like to sit down and try to figure out how we could do some preliminary work, either by volunteers from the roads committee or other residents that can go out and inspect or even, I don't know how much, I don't, I don't want to put it on staff, but if there's a way to go out ahead of time, figure out who's encroaching on the roads and giving those residents an opportunity to fix that problem. And if they can't fix it, I, I'd really like to look at, is there a way that we can hold the property owners accountable for that work or the costs associated with, you know, where they're, where they're driving, you know, all the residents to pay for this, the cost of removing their debris off of the road so we can pave it?
This is, so I, I, I totally agree with that. I, I think the comment was well-made, but there's a due process issue we're gonna have to fuddle through here because we're not, we don't specifically, as I understand it, when we survey the roads, we don't specifically necessarily mark where grubbing and, and, uh, dirt removal sloughage is. And we'd need to do that somehow in order to give notice to the property owner in advance of us expending the money. So probably the, the, the best and most important directive is for us to, and Gerald, to figure out how we do that. Mark off the properties. There's four feet of slough, there's debris, you know, whatever that is, and indicate that, that if, that you need to clear it back to some certain part, maybe due process, uh, the city attorney will have to tell us whether it's right or not, but maybe we have to actually mark that with a, with a, some sort of a, a spray can that says this is where it's gotta go back to and give them that opportunity before we do it and then charge them back. It's probably a multi-part issue, but it's, it's right. It's the real correct thing. People should clear off the sloughage, uh, that comes from their upper, upper di- area. That's all.
Do you think we should, um, uh, have staff do a review of the whole thing and all the different properties and then, uh, bring it back to the council for a discussion on assessing the, uh, the fee for that to all the different residents that live along the area we're gonna be paving?
I, I, I think we should at least look into the feasibility of doing it. Um, I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I think it's a great suggestion. I mean, he was throwing out, I mean, three hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I mean, it's part of the ordinance, is it's, it's.
Oh, I know.
It's, uh, it's all required.
So, I mean, I think we should look at the feasibility of it, Rafferty. Um, we don't know when this project's gonna start yet. I don't know if it's too ambitious for us to try to get it as part of this upcoming project. But maybe there's some, you know, maybe it's not everything. Maybe there's some really egregious properties that are out there as part of this project where it's gonna cost us a lot of money. Maybe we start, we do like a trial with some of these properties that have a lot of, you know, overburdened out on the, or, you know, sloughage, I think is the term that was used, out on the, out on the road. And I think, you know, Matt brought up, you know, the danger it creates for the fire department and narrowing roads and navigating the roads. I mean, we've got a, a new engine that's a little bit bigger than our, our other engine that was purpose-built for the heights and I, I absolutely think this is something we should probably get a little bit more aggressive with.
When you, when you, when they do the grubbing, do they just go to the edge of the pavement or do they go beyond the edge of the pavement? Or how much beyond the edge of the pavement?
Typically, the co, the specs required for like a foot beyond the edge of pavement.
A foot beyond. Okay.
I mean, that sounds like a pretty simplistic way to look at it, right? You dig until you get to the edge of the pavement and then you go another foot. I mean, I have to do it for my neighbor on our private road all the time because her, her stuff falls onto the driveway and creates a muddy mess. So I do it for her, but, um, I think that's something we, we could look at for this. Any other?
Well, I thought, I just want to be careful that we, we aren't saying, we're just right now agreeing that we're gonna.
No, I think we're asking for a feasibility, for the staff to look at the feasibility of doing it and coming back and telling us as part of this million and a half dollars we just authorized them to spend on paving roads.
Right, but as my understanding, prior councils have said, I think we need to, we, we need to do this as a long-term project rather than just surprise these people all of a sudden.
It's, it's, it's an ordinance, isn't it?
It's in the ordinance, yeah.
Well, I thought there was a prior policy that, I mean, I'm, I'm.
It's a city ordinance. I looked, I.
I want to say some more about the debt, the, uh, deficiencies in funding for the fire department, but on this particular issue, I, I, there's been a past policy that we would clear it the first time and then require the owner to keep it clear. Right? So are we change?
I, I don't know. I mean, is that documented somewhere?
I think Mr. Bergman knows about it.
Well, I know the, it's a problem throughout the whole entire city.
Right.
And I think everybody agrees that, that is a problem with it. And that's why I think we ought, should do a feasibility study and bring it back so we can talk about it.
Yeah, okay.
So we know, we, when we, we go into this project, at least we know what we're talking about and what the sloughage is and where the properties are, if there are certain properties that are problems. So we know what we're talking about.
I, I agree with that and we need to do this going forward.
Well, one very simple solution on this project is, if we don't have a complete answer at the moment, one simple solution is every place that we have to remove sloughage, we document that and we notify the property owner that we had to do that. And then in the subsequent year, we will not be doing that at our expense. We'll be doing it at their expense.
The, the problem is, is that we only do the roads every ten years. And by the time you get back to doing that property, it's gonna be a different council and a different, you know, a different recollection of what the informal rules were and, you know, it's probably even a different property owner that was there before. So I, like I said, I was shocked at the amount of money that was, that we were spending doing this. And I just think that it was one of the items that came up during this, during that meeting and we should definitely look into it.
It's definitely.
As a, as a very low-hanging fruit, as a very low-hanging fruit savings to the residents of, what's that?
Looking into it, I agree with.
So Raff can, I mean.
Why don't we look at the feasibility of it, the due process component of it?
The ordinance?
The, the ordinance. It's in the ordinance and in the legal notice that goes out, brush clearance-related wise every year. Um, but look at due process definitely and how we could quantify some of that work and the bidding process it would take for us to be able to go out and actually identify a bid and do the work and then charge or lean the property owners as far as doing the payment work.
And then I, I wanted to give a little summary of the, my overview of the workshop, which was, which is, we're all getting our property tax bills now. And if you look on there, you're paying a fire fee of, I don't know, six hundred some dollars. Um, we're a fire-prone city and we're very lucky to have our fire department. But changes in the last four or five years, I would strongly urge, if anybody listens to this, to go back and watch the video of the fire workshop because recent developments over the past few years have increased greatly the cost of running our fire department. We're very lucky to have this fire department and the model it is. But we learned at the workshop that at the end of the year, we had to take over six hundred thousand out of the general fund because the fire fee and the other sources of revenue that have been carrying the fire department in the past have either run out or we've got new requirements, especially the paramedics. I say, when I was on the council in the last millennia, we didn't even have paramedics in the city. But now we have an older population. Uh, we didn't have them and then we had a, an unusual situation where La Habra was charging us practically nothing. And then we've, now we have paramedics and because of Los Angeles requirements, we have to have two paramedics at all times. So you can see that alone has increased the cost of running this department. And we, as conscientious homeowners and want to protect our, our property, we're gonna have to figure out how to cover this deficit. So I strongly urge people to pay attention and, it, look at the tape and look at the future meetings so we all see where we're going on how we're gonna keep our fire department in the tip-top shape it is at this time.
I agree. I, I did want to just point out, Carol, that, you know, in the legal notice that goes out, I just pulled it up, that goes out every year, this is specifically called out. It says, "In addition, dirt and debris runoff from private property upon public roadways are similarly deemed a public nuisance. Since public nuisance must be abated, moreover, dirt, debris upon roadway shall also be cleared. Failure of the property owner to take and abate any of these such nuisances in front of his or her property will be cause for the city to perform the abatement. The costs will be assessed upon the land."
I, I agree. And I know there's been discussions about this, especially at the roads committee for a couple of years now.
But I mean.
So we do need to move forward on it.
Yeah. And I think the point you're making is, is, is a good point, is that we, you know, and I think it was the overwhelming concern of the residents that, that I heard was make sure you're, you're lean, that you're doing all the other things you need to do before you increase the tax, that you're looking at things like, and I think that's why Matt brought it up. I can give you, from, from the money we spent on the roads, I can give you several hundred thousand dollars if you fix this problem to supplement the fire department, is what I, I mean, I'm reading between the lines, but that's kind of what I was hearing. And I heard it, you know, I heard the similar message from several other people is before we consider increasing the tax, let's make sure we're addressing some of these other low-hanging issues that, you know, certain residents are driving costs into the city that other residents are having to pay through, you know, through taxes.
Well, I'll, I'll be interested because, I mean, there's some pit properties, I don't know how you deal with them. They have a huge frontage. And if you carve that back a foot beyond the pavement, I don't know the ramifications of that. So that should be part of the feasibility study. I'm gonna talk about my own property. I mean, I live on a very narrow street and my house is pretty close to the road. If you cut out a foot or two, I'm gonna lose my front yard, you know?
Well, but then is that, is that an illegal taking from the public right-of-way, though?
What?
I mean, if you're using a foot and a half of the public right-of-way, is that an illegal taking? I mean, are you, are you in a?
I'm not using a foot and a half, but there, the recommendation was you go beyond, a foot beyond the pavement.
We can, we can.
So I'm just saying.
Let's, let's have, let's give staff an opportunity. We can bring it back soon. And let's have this conversation because I think we owe it to the public to make sure we're.
I agree.
Addressing all of the issues before we talk about a tax increase, which we might get there, but. Okay. All right. Where are we? We need a, do we need a motion? Is that where we're at on this one?
Now receiving file.
Is it receiving file? Okay, hold on. Sorry, my, through all of that debate, my computer, uh, decided to go to sleep on me. So let me get the call back up.
We are on item number twenty-four.
Yeah, item twenty-four. Thank you.
Disposition of a type-one fire engine. I will turn it over to Chief Martin.
So after doing the needs assessment, uh, we're engine-heavy. So in light of the fact that I'm gonna have to make room for the new engine, uh, the type-one engine that we bought from O E S and that we painted looks very good and it's very sellable. So it would be because of its turning radius and the fact that it carries almost eight hundred gallon. So it would be because of its turning radius and the fact that it carries almost 800 gallons of water, it's not suitable for the heights. It's very hard to maneuver, you're doing a lot of three-point at, at certain spots in the heights. So we could put it out to auction and get some money back for it. It's in really great shape, so some department is going to want to have that. So it's my recommendation that we put the engine 774 out to auction.
So the, just a quick question, the, so then that would mean the, the Rosenbauer would become our primary like response? Like if we send people out to deal with brush, that would be the, because I thought that's why we bought that one was for our, when we sent people out to deal with other fires, the, the strike teams, thank you. So the, the Rosenbauer then would become the primary strike team engine?
Correct.
Okay.
And the KME would be the backup?
That was the other, that was the other, I want to make sure we're not eroding that capability because that was the other comment we heard is that residents are saying, hey, let's look at making the fire department a profit center again and going out and, you know, forming strike teams and getting these kids that experience, but also bringing the revenue back to the city.
And with that said, the Rosenbauer is more suited to be a wildland.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't eroding that ability to, if, I want to keep that option open to the city. All right. Any other comment on this?
When was this engine purchased? How old is it?
The engine itself is a 2001 HME. When we purchased it, it had the, the painting, it had the typical OES color, which is like a lime color with some yellow highlights.
Highlighter yellow color. I think we got it, we got it during COVID, didn't we, Rafferty?
We, we purchased it during the COVID-ish times. It was, there was a large number of fires burning in Northern California and we had strike teams out. So at that time, we were just flying people up and they were just going into OES rigs. So we had actually sent several crews up and changed it out. And then after those fires were done, they just had to drive it back home and kind of came home, went to the shop and they said, hey, we're going to get rid of them. And it was not all that expensive, so at the time, it was a good
We got a really good deal on it, I recall.
We did well, was not a very large purchase price for, for the engine, so.
I think we paid $40,000 for it at the time and it was purchased for, for strike teams and things. And actually, we can thank Bob Archuleta because he actually took care of painting the thing for free for us. So that was another thing that we got on it. So if we can get our $40,000 back on the sale or even more, that'd be great.
That's the plan.
All right, any, any other comments, questions? Motion?
Move the recommendation forward.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
I just, may I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So we have, I don't know much about, we have one engine that I've heard people complain about because it's too tall. I'm not very good at
That's, that's a Rosenbauer.
That's the
That's a Rosenbauer.
That's the one we're not selling.
That's the one you're not selling? Okay, then we've got one that keeps breaking down all the time.
That's a KME.
Which, which
We're not selling?
Which, but I think we got it fixed, I mean,
It, it was a long convoluted and expensive lesson to learn that it was a $145 cable that had frayed and was banging against the engine. And that was causing it to, the computer to misfire and send
But it's, it's been in service for many months now.
Right, we're not, we haven't put it down for any reason.
Okay, so we're keeping that engine?
Yeah.
And then we're getting, we have the new engine?
So we have the new engine. We're going to have the KME as a backup to the new engine. And we're going to have the Rosenbauer, which is ideally suited for wildland because it's a hybrid. It's a Type 1, Type 3.
Okay, thank you for your patience.
Okay, so I have motion, I have the second. Norm, you said yes.
Yes, I'm ready.
Carol?
Okay.
That's a yes.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian, yes. John's a yes, all right. Now Carol, you made my computer go to sleep again. All right, item 25.
I believe I need to accuse myself from this one. I will live within 500 feet or less.
Is it your party, Norm?
Not quite, but I live in a Canañita, so I figured.
Okay. All right, Raph?
The item before you tonight is a fee waiver request for an encroachment permit. The block on Canañita do an annual block party event where they close the road down and everybody comes out, kind of brings that neighborhood together a little more to close the road, does take an encroachment permit for it. So they have submitted a request for council to waive the fee for the, the encroachment permit. So it would be a waiving of the total fee for encroachment permit, which is $382.57. So Canañita can have their block party and without having to pay that encroachment permit application fee.
And I think I, I think I ask this every year, but I'll ask it again. We, we get no complaints from anyone about the street being shut down or, and the chief, the chief's okay? If we have an emergency that there's
There's easy ways around because Subtropic runs parallel to it, so they're able to get around no problem, no issues.
Public safety concerns with this?
Nope.
Okay. Motion or questions?
Move the approval request. Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
John's a yes. All right, well, here's another one of those things that I'm just so proud of our city and our, one of our council members. One of the, one of the issues that came up during our workshop was that we had firefighters that were sharing equipment. And namely, something that I, I think, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't be shared as a, as a part of just being a member of our firefighting family and, and knowing how important something as simple as a badge is and having your own badge. So Greg, I was hoping someone would do this and this is mighty generous of you. So maybe you can just, I don't know if the chief is going to talk about this or if you want to talk about this, but man, this is very, very generous of you to do this.
Well, one of the things we really got from the chief's presentation was the amount of scrimping and saving we're doing to not, not, not bankrupt the city. And, and, you know, we have very old facilities that are going to have to be dealt with, that, that came out during the meeting. We have now, we're, we're fortunate enough to be having a lot of good young people coming here to learn. And we're having both men and women. And we're, and we're having great difficulty accommodating both sexes in a, in a very old and dilapidated operation. We're redarning their, their uniforms and moving from one firefighter to the next, thank God they're the same size. And, and of course now our turnouts are going to be running out of life, usable life. And so, but the one thing I thought that we could give these people is a badge they can carry with honor. And then Rafferty suggested to me, well, there's this other opportunity to put these sew-on badges. And I said, no, 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 these people are firefighters. They should carry a shield just like every other public safety person does. So it's a small matter and, but it was a joy to be able to do it. I'm glad I can do it. I think it's, I hope it's symbolic for other people to think about what we need to do to help these young people both learn and learn in some semblance of dignity. So that's, that's what that's all about.
So I, I don't think we did this, but I want to make sure that, you know, the public that are watching this on video and the couple of folks that are here is that council member Steffler did, did donate $5,000 to a fund to help make, ensure that our fire department, firefighters have something as basic as a hard badge that they can, that they can carry.
Right, and I know that I speak for the young men and women of the fire department. Very, very much appreciative, very generous, very thoughtful of you. From my heart, I thank you.
So Chief, the other thing too that I heard, and again, what I'd like to, to work on, and I know there's probably some other people working on this too, is setting up a, a uniform fund. So that was the other thing I heard too, is that there's some folks that are having a tough time purchasing their uniforms. So if you can let staff know what that looks like or what, what the possibilities are there to, you know, I'd be happy to try to, you know, work with, you know, the, the various charitable groups within the city to, to do that if it's not already in, in progress. But I don't want to step on anyone's toes, but something as basic as making sure, you know, our firefighters have, you know, uniforms to wear is something that we should be looking at.
And I want to personally thank Greg, that was very, very, very generous, generous of him. And I hope he gets, I hope a lot of people watch this council meeting. And I hope a lot of people say thanks to you. You probably won't like it, but I hope they do. And it's, you should be recognized by a lot of people in the community because it's, it's really a generous thing to do for our fire department. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And this isn't the first generosity that Mr. Steffler has exhibited toward the fire department. He's really wonderful asset to the community.
It would just be, it's, it's kind of wonder, Chief Martin did a great job of any thinking person in listening to what he has to do and how great he's done at recruiting these young people. And they, they need a, they, they need to have not just the learning experience, but they need to have, be able to be prideful and carry, carry their badge on their chest and that's an important thing. So that's what really got to me and that's why I just walked in and dropped the check off. Because I think it's, it's good.
All right.
And I absolutely agree, of course.
Sorry, Norm.
I absolutely agree, thank you very much, Greg, appreciate it.
Do, do we need to accept the donation? Is that what we need? So we need a motion to accept the donation?
And authorize a budget amendment. Budget amendment to 260-710-FIR-6911.
So I, I know normally the mayor doesn't, normally the mayor doesn't make the motion, but I'm going to make the motion. So I, I move that we Yeah, so So A, I move that we accept the donation of $5,000 from council member Steffler to the fire department and authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $5,000 to account 260-710-FIR-6911 for the purchase of the firefighter badges.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
A big yes.
John's a yes.
And I'm really a yes.
All right. All right, so that's the end of our administrative items. I'm can't, you know, glad we're ending on such an amazing note. Again, Greg, thank you. Individual council member informational items or meetings that they attended? I have nothing. Okay, any, I'll reopen it up for public comment, any public comments? Bruce Thomas.
Hey Bruce Thomas, Mr. Steffler, thank you. As a former volunteer, that little badge, just a little thing, but it means a whole lot. I've still got mine hanging on the wall when I retired, so it means a lot. Also, just something, I was thinking about it when the Firewatch people were here. We need to, as families, this is everybody in the Heights, have a contact somewhere outside of even California. If we have a major happening here, I'm in Norwalk, my wife's up here. We lose our phones. It can happen, probably not, but it can happen. We need to have a contact outside of our general area. And that goes for everybody, not just us. Everybody in the Heights should have a contact somewhere outside of their community. Just a thought. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, anything else? Meeting adjourned, thank you.